You can go.
I'd like to open the meeting of the, I'd like to have a motion to open up the meeting of the school committee for the purposes of discussing the FY14 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
We are now open.
Okay, call the order, the May 14th. What day is today?
Eight, ninth.
May eighth, I'm jumping the gun. The May ninth meeting of the town of Wareham board of selectmen and sewer commissioners, we're only meeting as selectmen tonight and not sewer commissioners. And may I have the call, please?
Selectmen Whiteside, selectmen Slaven, selectmen Tylerbaum are present tonight. Selectmen Holmes will definitely be out due to a family emergency. Town administrator Derek Sullivan is here.
Thank you.
So I will, would just like to say thank you again for coming here tonight and for this committee also for both coming to continue to discuss the fiscal 14 budget and the unfortunate circumstances that we are in, which is our need to cut both of our budgets. Last time we were together, there was a presentation by Dr. Ravinevich and also by Mr. Sullivan regarding a proposed percentage of cuts that would be cut of each budget. What happened at that last meeting is that we had a discussion about that, about the percentages, and we said that really the next step is for each one of our administrators to go back, continue to discuss, negotiate, and to come prepared to this meeting with the agreed-upon percentage that they are both recommending, as well as a one-page slide that discusses the cuts, as well as the effect of those cuts. Does, does that pretty much cover what we thought?
Yeah, that's essentially my understanding. I won't say it's a pleasure to have to be meeting under these circumstances, but it's a pleasure to be meeting with the school committee.
Just for information, Selectman Troppiano has a meeting that required him to be there. He'll be here as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that probably what we should start off with. I don't know Derek or Barry who wanted to...
If I can just talk about the document that I passed out, understandings from meeting of May 7th, which is a meeting that I held with Mr. Sullivan, just to explain the document, and then Derek can speak whether he agrees with my interpretation of it as just the beginning before we see the two slides. Yes, that would be the one-page chart.
This one here.
Is there anybody that needs a copy? Does Kenny need one?
He thinks he has it.
Okay. So, under the column of May 1st, which is when we met a week ago, the deficit was $1,169,094. And if we did the split of 63 and a half to 36 and a half, the two numbers underneath that would be the portion of the cuts for the school system and the town. 742,374 for the schools and 426,719 for the town. After discussion with Derek, Derek asked that the transportation number be reduced first, and so by reducing the non-net spending from $1,601,056 down to the $1,476,287, we reduced the deficit by $124,769. So the new deficit was $1,044,325. The, using the same split, 63 and a half and 36 and a half, we came up with the schools having to cut $663,146 and the town having to cut $381,179. So at this point, I'd like Derek to speak about his understanding.
Yes, I believe this one's on.
Try this.
My belief was incorrect, that one was not on. But simply, Dr. Ravinevich and I had met, and his synopsis is accurate.
So if we can agree that that is the starting point, then Mr. Sullivan and I can each show our slide and how we arrived at the cuts that we needed to come to.
All right, so I just want to, from this board here, this is the number that we're starting from. Are there comments or questions for Dr. Ravinevich? Okay?
The 663.
Yes.
What was just presented. Okay. Okay. All right.
Right as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes?
Just to be clear, the school committee last night made a point of not approving the reduction in the, in the non-transituation budget. I don't think anybody at this table should construe the absence of any comments or questions as meaning that the school committee has approved the starting point. That would be disingenuous.
Yes, and I think that I probably should have clarified as a starting point for this discussion.
Okay, but still seems the public should be mystified by the fact that we're using it as a starting point, yet we disagreed to take that action last night, so...
Right, we decided not to take a vote last night for the purposes of hearing both of the presentations and the cuts, and then for the discussion after.
Okay.
Do you want to go first?
I think you went first last time, and I'm more than welcoming for it to happen again.
Oh, okay.
It's like one of those things, who's going to step out and say...
Out of the capsule, let your face.
I feel a little bit getting tired. Maybe bring it up. It's like Derek let you go first.
Yeah.
Set it up, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Didn't you give one?
We're all set, thank you. Okay, yeah.
So, that's not the slide, that's just... We were asked to put together one slide that equaled the amount of money that we needed to cut. I proportioned this as approximately $130,000 for each of the elementary schools and the middle school, $250,000 for Wareham High School, and approximately $30,000 from central office, and I'll explain each of them as I go through.
Dr. Ravinevich, can you please take the wireless microphone that's in front of Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you, and I see that it is working.
You're not getting any more money.
At the Minnet Forest Elementary School, I met with Principal Siemens, and we looked at what could be cut in the building. She felt that she needed the teachers that she had there. She already had at grade four approximately 27 students per teacher, and she could not make any cuts because that would affect class size at the school. She looked at other potentials, but this is the year that the fifth grade will be moving to the middle school, and therefore some staff was also going with those fifth grades. So a unified art teacher needed to go as well, so she did not have any room in her specialist schedules to, to cut anything there. So, not that she's happy with this cut, but it's the only place that she felt she could cut because the interventionists provide extra assistance for students that need it. This will put a, a larger burden on the regular ed teacher, which the regular ed teacher is the tier one, that's where the general instruction happens, and she felt that this is where she needed to cut. You know, not that she wanted to cut, not that she felt she could afford to cut, and then that this is the third year of cuts, there was nothing else left to cut. At the middle school, the principal looked through all of his non-instructional accounts, came up with approximately $75,000 that will affect student activities and supplies, and then he cut the one guidance position that he had in the building. He has two school psychologists to provide psychological services and special ed services, but when we ran three houses in this building, it was nice to have another mental health person in the third house. With the fifth grade coming, the school will be split into five, six, and seven, eight, and will look more like two houses, and the feeling is that we could live with that at this time. Not that it is optimum, not that we wanted to cut, but we needed to find the money. At Wareham High School, we've had an adjustment counselor available for students in need, somebody that had a social worker background that can make home visits, could work with our most difficult children. Mr. Palladino, when looking at his program, felt that if he needed to cut, that was one position that he would have to cut. He also cut one of his art teachers, so he has left one and a half art teachers instead of the two and a half that he had previously. The band, because the band instructor is leaving the system and we're going to be hiring a new band instructor, he put that down to a two-third position, therefore savings one-third of the salary. He reduced three clubs. He took the department heads, and where each department, like science, math, history, English, had their own department head, those are being combined, so that it will be a combined humanities department and a combined STEM department. And instead of having eight or nine people in the department, there'll be 16 to 17 people in each of those departments. There'll be a social studies teacher who's retiring that will not be replaced, one teaching assistant, and there'll be, I don't know the exact number, but I believe it was about $10,000 that will be cut out of the sports program, and that certain sports that have smaller participations may be cut. And under the impact, you can see that the service to the most needy students is cut, as well as activities, that is 4.83 full-time equivalents at that building. The Deacon's Elementary School, two classroom teachers, one of them is a kindergarten teacher due to enrollment at this time, it seems that we'll be able to do that, and a fourth-grade teacher, and as I said, will be at 27 or 28 students in that fourth grade. It is not the desirable number. And also, maintenance supplies, that affects 3.5 full-time equivalents. And central office, ongoing negotiations between people that have individual contracts, as well as a particular bargaining unit, is where I will get the rest of the money to balance this cut out. This is 11.33 FTEs on this particular cut. When we put it together over the last three years, it's 35.35 people who have lost their Any questions before I give it off to Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, doctor. To be clear, that, oh no, that slide was fine.
Which one you want?
The one, the last one you were on.
The last one, the 35?
Yeah, and to be clear, I mean, that, those are real bodies, they're not just positions, correct?
Absolutely, they're real bodies.
Thank you.
Now, just for full disclosure, one or two of those people are retiring, and we're not replacing them, and that is a strategy so that we don't incur additional unemployment insurance, but they are positions that we would have replaced if we didn't have to cut this money.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's a question?
Yes.
Could you go back to the previous slide, please? I wanted the cut slide, whichever one that is. Thank you. In a system that is more than 50% free and reduced, could you, could you tell us how common interventionists are?
Not very common at all.
Really?
That is correct.
So this, this was a luxury that we would not find in most systems?
I would not say it was a luxury. It was something that we put in because we felt that we needed it for the students and the needs of our students. Interventions are done by a number of different people. For instance, special ed teachers do interventions. Those people will still be in the building and will still do interventions. You're well aware, we created halftime ILs that are also interventionists. Those people will also still be in the buildings. Is it as good as it would have been with these additional two FTEs? Absolutely not.
When the principals, when the elementary school principals presented to the school committee a few weeks ago, they pointed out that tier one was approximately 50% in their schools. So what we're saying is that 50% of the kids, unless they get intervention from people whose job it is not to regularly intervene, will, will essentially not be learning the lessons. Is that a fair statement?
I really don't want to debate it, I don't think it's a fair statement.
I wasn't...
And the reason...
I was happy to be contradicted.
Okay, and the reason I don't feel it's a fair statement is it is the job of the regular education teacher to reach the 80%. Now, have we done that in every single class? No, and that's why there is much work to be done. But that is the goal, so that your regular ed classroom teacher reaches 8%, and that's why keeping class sizes that are manageable when you have various students with disabilities in the classroom are very important.
Thank you.
Yes.
Everybody, how you doing today, this evening? I still, I have to butt in right here because I think that we cannot lose sight of the big picture, and the big picture is this. We're doing this from a budgetary perspective, and you've heard me say several times since I've been on the school committee, your budget is your philosophy and numbers. And we can't lose sight of the big picture that these interventionists were put in to close the achievement gap. That's the real issue. It's not a budgetary issue, it's a learning issue. It's transformed itself into a budgetary issue. Bottom line is this, we've got a transient population, we've got people coming into Wareham that are being tested in Wareham from who knows where they came from. Okay, we, we don't know, we've got varied abilities, we've got varied backgrounds, we've got varied background, background knowledge, and this was a strategy to close the achievement gap, because we believe philosophically that every kid deserves a decent education. Unfortunately, it has transformed itself into a budget issue. But the main issue, let's be clear about this, the main issue is the fact that we are not going to be able to service those kids. Period, the end.
Can you listen? Okay.
So this would be the general government cuts as we go on there. The first portion would be the police. What that would represent is the three full-time employees, two of them patrolmen, one administration. That would leave us with approximately four officers per shift on the road, or four officers for 22,000 people year-round, 44,000 people in the summer. They have the summer seasonals that help out during some of the day and night shifts, but the third shift, that's what we would be looking at. It also does away with what's been the leasing program for the cruisers. This year, we had, we still have one lease payment of $49,000, however, the $99,000 was not replaced. That's why when you see at the bottom, the actual cuts are 381, excuse me, 481 instead of 381. I understood that maybe we wouldn't lease anymore, but we try and find another method because we do need more cruisers for our police force. I think the new ones, as we like to call them, are at about 115,000 miles. So... The library, the reduction from them would be $107,198. I've actually estimated that at 1.5 full-time employees because the library director and myself, you know, we both realize that this cut is essentially devastating to the library. It would decertify them because of the percentages that we are supposed to be paying on there and the increases. It does away with most of their programs, including the teen and tweens. You received an email, all of you, about the number of people in our population, including kids that are touched by the library. If we do this, and this is where the cuts come from, you know, unless there's some other funding source, it's, it's essentially devastating to the library. Administration, and I've included the one time, the one full-time employee for the financial analyst for two reasons. I, I need another body in my department to, to work with. It's, the workload doesn't help when you're putting a lot of the things together. However, also realized when we were talking about starting with a level-funded budget, a level-funded budget is essentially a cut. We cut to put, we cut positions even to get there. Accounting, again, the assistant town accountant, that position would be removed. We now have the finance director, but I would, if we had money, I would add to that staff because that's, that's one of the ones that eventually, the more oversight you have in there, the more money you save the entire town. Municipal maintenance, it's a reduction of $35,472. It's actually much larger than that if we don't take the additional steps. It's just one full-time employee. However, what I've been speaking about is the end of private roadshowing. We do not have to do it. It would save us, per snowstorm, $25,000. Everybody forgets, even though the snow and ice is allowed to go into deficit, we still have to pay those monies, and it goes against our free cash. So you estimate if we had four snowstorms, not large ones, but snowstorms where we called, called the contractors out, that would save us about $100,000. Degrading, we grade private roads. We have a grader that's approximately 30 years old, costs us mint to maintain, and probably would have to be replaced in the next few years. We can't do it anymore. And here's one that, this is, this is a philosophical question, what sort of community are we? Weekend trash beach cleaning ends, we have to pay overtime to do that. It costs us at least $1,000 a week to do it during the summer. We can't afford it. Other contractual obligations and offsets, if you look, this doesn't include their actual salaries, but we've made some other cuts. It would be a full-time employee from the assessor's office and a part-time employee or .63 hours, which is, .63%, which is roughly 25 hours from the, from the harbor masters. Altogether, that's $481,171, or 8.88 full-time employees. I think I owe you guys $8.
We'll take it. Yes.
Of the 8.88 FTEs, how many of them are unfilled positions at the moment?
Four of them.
So half of them are, half of them represent real people?
Actually, all of them represent real people because we need those positions, just like you do.
But, but four, but four people will lose their jobs.
Four people will lose their jobs.
All right, thank you.
So it's asked for me to do, do a similar comparison. And in FY11, we had 122.25 full-time employees. This is paid out of the general government. I've not included the water pollution control or the EMS. So in FY12, we lost a half position. In FY13, believe it or not, we lost a little over four. We planned on three. We had four and a half altogether. With this 8.8, that is over the same, same amount of time, 13.39, or almost 12% of our entire general government workforce, force. So the question is, are we all in the same boat? And the answer is yes. Can I entertain any questions?
It's up to them to...
Derek, do, do you want to show that slide that you have about Mr. Flaherty's question about the percentage?
Thank you.
Cut, since you put it in, so, I know we was just supposed to do the one slide, but believe me, this is a lot better than the normal 32-slide presentation.
Presentations. Yeah, we saw yours in January. Thank you for the absence of a repeat.
No, the one on top of that, the, the one about the budget FY14, yeah, that's the one I think that Mr. Flaherty was asking about with the this year versus last year.
Correct.
And when you say projected, was that the actual dollar amount, was the town's general side budget last year appropriated?
The, after the fall town meeting, I think we were, we were at 10, we were either at 10, 2, 5, 6, or I think we're...
So that was, that's very close to what the appropriation was after fall town meeting.
Correct. And the reason for the FY12 budget, for you to see it up there, is when you see in the budget document, I put everything in there for the grants, the transfers from receipts reserved for appropriation accounts, legal settlements, emergency expenditures, even if we were reimbursed by them, just so you see what our total spending was. That would have been closer to almost 11.4 million, and I didn't think it would be a fair comparison to see a $1.6 million reduction.
Okay, thank you.
The public heard...
You have to speak into the microphone.
The public heard, I think, it was about a year ago, that we were going to go to a four-day work week. Can you, I'm not criticizing your choices of, of cuts, can you tell the, the public at large what the status of that four-day work Can you tell the, the public at large what the status of that four-day work week is and why it was, you chose not to do, go in that direction?
That's a great question. Impact bargaining. You would have to get it through the unions. It's a change of working conditions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did just have one regarding the harbor master. You've got a .63 full-time employee. Which position would that be?
That would be one of the clerical positions that they have in there.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the only thing that I'll say is that, again, it is up to the town side to, you know, decide based on how to run the town, where the cut should come. But it's, it's unfortunate that just another cut is going to be affecting the, the children of Wareham. That there's a ner cut on there that's going to be doing that.
The library.
The library, the programs out of the library, the teen and tween program, so.
We are unfortunately, I can remember when I was a kid, the library hours were significantly different. I know Cliff can speak to that. Where were the stone tablets kept? Which cave? Yeah, exactly, but you know what I'm saying? As a little kid go up to the library, they're open five-night week.
And weekends.
And evening, weekends, the whole nine yards. What we're looking now unfortunately is to strip mine, if you will, a library that is open maybe two-thirds as much as it was when I was a kid. When I was a kid, we had municipal trash collection. That disappeared 30 years ago. We had a recreation department when I was a kid, and I believe we had that right up until about 10 years ago. That's gone. That's something that helped kids as well. The budget on the town side has been a source of whittling for a long time. That's not to say that the school side doesn't have needs and doesn't have resources. But I think a lot of the, the difficulty for people to understand the problems we have in trying to balance the priorities is that so much of the things that one might consider optional on a typical town side budget have already disappeared. And so we too are cutting to the bone, as are you. And this is the unfortunate consequence of needs versus lack of revenues. It's the unfortunate consequence of trying to negotiate decent contracts for employees and not really being able to afford them anymore. It's a consequence of diminished property values. It's a consequence of a recession. It's a consequence of, it's a perfect storm that's hit this town. It's a consequence of state cuts in aid to us. It's a consequence of a federal government that's in gridlock and doesn't do half the things for the municipalities that were done 30, 40 years ago.
Consequence of choice.
Yeah. It's difficult. I agree 100% with you, Dr. Sylvia. But this unfortunately is the sad necessity we face, is to sit down. And I heard somebody talk about taking a scalpel to the town budget at one point. We're not doing that. We're taking a machete to it. And this is where we are.
Yes?
To Mr. Sullivan, regarding moving the non-net before, before agreeing to a number, with what's presented here, what is, what is the benefit to the town side if you go that route? How much does it, does it work out in your favor?
$35,054, $45,548.31.
I got the same thing. I just wanted to check the math.
Check their math.
All right, so that's, that's, that's the benefit. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Did you happen to watch our, our meeting last night?
No.
Okay, I didn't know if you were, all right.
Oh, come on!
This is true. Maybe he was awake. No, I've, I've been, I've been probably the most adamant about keeping that in there until after we come up with a percentage. And I've been giving it a lot of thought today. And Mrs. Vugan brings it, had a good segue with the services that the library provides to the kids. And being the former chair of the library trustees, I've been called by a couple of members who sat, who sit at that table today to, to express their concerns. And I, I understand that, that, that threat is real. I mean, you're, even, even if you weren't cutting the library, you're, you're on waiver after waiver from, from the state. I mean, and sooner or later, they're going to say no, even, even, even without cutting further. So, so that threat of decertification is absolutely real, absolutely real. Speaking, you know, with the obligatory caveat, speaking only for myself right now at this table, I am okay removing the non-net first if, if you could assure us that all of that $45,000 goes toward the library. And I say that because the library is really attached to the hip of the school. I mean, it's, it, 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 I forget the figure. I'm sure Mrs. Maderos has the numbers on, the number of youth that it serves yearly. It's, it's phenomenal. Mrs. Hickey, the preschool librarian there? I had, I had one, one, one member of the community put it best, you know, between teddy bear storytime and everything else that happens before the kids even hit the schools. She was in many ways, maybe of the kids in this town's first teacher. So that's, that's how I look at it, and I'm okay supporting that if you can, if you can agree to put that toward the library.
I'll just say one thing. The, I mean, that, that is a suggestion from you. It's not a representation of the board.
Absolutely not.
And the only thing that I would say is I do understand that that is an unfair position to put in. It would be the same thing if one of you said the $79,000 and where you would want it to go. So I just think that it's something to say from a board perspective.
True.
The, the first point is if that hundred, hundred some odd thousand isn't taking out, I will have to reduce the, what we've already cut, an additional $45,000.
An additional?
An additional.
Additional $45,000?
Correct.
I thought this was representing the, the number.
No.
That slide is, his $45,000 is in that slide.
So.
Just like our $79,000 is in our cutting.
So either, either, I mean, either way, the library stands a real good chance of being decertified.
Absolutely.
Just to that point, Selectman Slavin and I, as you know, a library is more than just a town department. It, it's also supported by other entities. And to that end, and I can't, I certainly am not going to represent that there's any guarantee of success. But to that end, Selectman Slavin and I have already begun reaching out to those third-party entities to try to see if they can help us by stepping into the breach budget-wise here. I, I know that they had different plans for that money. That's been made quite apparent to us. However, when you start talking about putting windows into a closed library, when you start talking about building up sufficient equity in a fund to pay out the dividends over the course of time to a closed library, again, I don't like to have to go a-begging, but we've started that process.
Yeah. Just, just, Dr. Ravinevich pointed me to the right page here, but I just want, for the, for the record, that 138 children's programs were held with 2,976 kids in attendance at the library. I mean, that's, that's 2,900 kids, and we, what's our, what's our school district?
Twenty-eight-five.
Twenty-eight-five, and I'm sure there's overlap between the programs, but I mean, you get, you get the idea. I mean, it's, it is attached to the hip at the schools.
Mr. Flaherty, if you, if you don't mind reading the rest of that, because I think that's just as impactful.
Sure. Let's see. So I'll start from the first paragraph here. People of all ages were able to borrow 148,377,000 items and received access to millions of items in libraries across the Commonwealth and beyond. 138 children's programs were held with 2,976 in attendance. Fifteen teen programs were held with 710 in attendance. Twenty-five adult programs were held with 738 attending. Thirty-three volunteers worked 1,352 hours. 16,830 people are active registered borrowers. And what's, what's, it touches on here too is if we lose, if we lose accreditation, then, then we can't go to Born or Marion and stop borrowing books unless they, unless they say it's okay. Their trustees would, their boards would have to agree to allow us to do it. Being certified, it's just, it's just automatic.
Okay. Yes?
I just want to point out, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the total body politic. I think, I think we guys have done a good job. Painful, but absolutely necessary. You have publicly talked about the impact on education. What Mr. Sullivan has presented tonight is going to be an impact on the quality of life in this town, which impacts all of the citizens, okay? If you think this is fun, if anybody thinks that we are happy with these, it just isn't okay. But I do want to point out some things that we can be very proud of. We have a Boys and Girls Club that we didn't have 30 years ago. Something like that. We have a Y in town that provides substantial programs. I'm not saying that these entities take the place of the library, but they are supplementing the programs that are available to our kids and our seniors and in-betweens. So, yeah, it's a biggie, and it's a really nasty one. And we've talked about it before, a couple of years ago, I think, maybe three or four years ago. There are ways to help the library. Mr. Tittlebaum has talked about them. I think that it's important for the citizens of the town to step up, to show their appreciation of the library in the ways that they can. I just want to say, I'm, I'm very, very pleased that no one is happy, but that no one's calling each other names at this table. I think that we have done what we set out to do, which was consensus as unpleasant and as painful as we knew that it would be, allowing the two CEOs, if you will, to do their jobs.
Yes?
It's very easy to deal rationally with rational people. The, the thing that, I wasn't going to speak to town side expenses because I'm of the mindset that town side expenses are town side expenses, and we've got the good folks, I'm sure, have got the best interests of the town. But in terms of the library, well, you know, even though that I made a joke out of the library, to be quite honest with you, growing up in a Portuguese household, I was at the library every night. This is going back to the 50s and 60s. And that library was open till eight o'clock every single solitary night, six days a week. And I lived there because I couldn't get any work done at home because it was like an insane asylum. So it, it does provide services. Plus, you know, back in those days, we didn't have computers, so I didn't have to worry about it. But anyways.
Okay, department head or something in technology?
Well, we were. I'll tell you how we put in technology. We were, as a matter of fact, Wayham Public Schools was a, was a pioneer in technology, for your information.
No, I was just, I'm sorry. We had a, a short laugh last night regarding.
Anyways.
The department head.
The point that I'm trying to make is, no one, no one's happy with this. I voted against the budget last year, and I was ready to vote against the budget this year. Not because I want to be the guy that says no, because I have to vote my conscience. And relative to what I believe to be the number one issue in Wareham, which I believe is education, then I also believe that it should be the number one priority. So I guess that I'm happy that we're here, and I'm happy that we're talking, and I'm happy that we, we've kind of come to a meeting of minds. But the one question I was going to ask on the budget that I didn't ask because I don't, I, you know, I don't want to dampen the enthusiasm of, of the meeting. But it just seems to me that for whatever reason, and this is my perception, and I'm not speaking for the board, just my perception, that we, we, we sit around the table, and we make compromise, and we, and we take away from our junior citizens. But yet, the senior citizens seem to be non-touchable. Am I wrong in my, my perceptions? And I'm a citizen. Am I wrong in my perceptions?
Temporarily.
I'm wrong?
Temporarily.
Temporarily wrong?
Derek.
Oh, I don't know if I'm temporarily wrong.
One of the things that probably should have me investing in a flak jacket is the senior work-off program. Costs us approximately $54,000 each year. I reduced that to $25,000.
So I was wrong, and that's fine.
Making sure there's the income limits in there. Also having a lottery system so that people that are chosen are, are not necessarily anybody specific. So that is one of the items. We know that if you, if you looked at the Council on Aging budget, it has shrunk over the last few years.
That's fine. Because I have to be an advocate for the junior citizens.
I was told the other day that Mr. Sullivan hates the seniors, so.
Oh, really? Then I guess you, I guess you do have to have a flak jacket. Thank you for your answer, and I appreciate your candor.
Where we're at right now is, is a temporary stopgap. That's all this really is. This is just to get us through.
Last point.
To basically start, once we get an agreement today, hopefully, we start actually 24 hours later of working for 2015's budget. And just as an example, we need to look at a bunch of things on the town side, and it's the whole town, it's not just the school, and look at a lot of different things of how we're going to save more money because we have to come up with more savings for the, for the following year. So we're only at a little point now where we have an issue there. I'm hoping that we come up with different programs. We're looking at everything right now, you know, from EMS, Council on Aging, whatever you come up with, we're looking at alternatives of how to save money. It takes a little time than we'd like to actually have, but it's what it is. So there's nothing sacred right now.
Well, I just wanted to make one more point if I couldn't, I thought, just, just one more point. And my point is this, and I won't say anything the rest of the night, I promise.
Except for I agree.
The media picked up on that one. You're in trouble now.
I agree with Mr. Slavin, and I, I think we, we're going to continue to, to make hard decisions. But I'm also convinced, and I've been, I've been around here for a hell of a long time. And I'm convinced that, you know, I'm still saying that we cannot continue to solve this problem on the expense side of the ledger. And I just, I just see us coming back here next year with the same scenario. And at one, at some point in time, we've got to make some hard choices in terms of revenue. And, and you know, I know it's unpopular, and I know no one wants to talk about it, but we, we cannot continue to manage this town by looking at the expense side of the ledger. We can't continue to do that. There's got to be an honest and candid discussion with all of the players, much like we are here tonight, finance committee, whatever, and come up with a strategy that is revenue-producing as opposed to expense-cutting. That is got to be the strategy of the future. The strategy of the future has got to be, how are we going to get more dollars? And with that, I think that, because I honestly do believe that next year, we're all going to be sitting around this table, or a table like it, with the same scenario.
I just want to point out that the median house, median sales price in, for single-family homes in 2007 was $260,000. Median house, single-family house price in 2012 was $140,000. You do the math, I do the math. That's a decrease of $120,000 in valuation to people who are homeowners over five years. You said you weren't going to talk again.
But, that's flawed.
Go ahead.
Now.
I'm asking Leonard to speak.
I am, but flawed.
The, the building permits for homes, single-family homes peaked in numbers in 2003. Peaked in the, in valuation in 2004 at $155,000. It peaked at 117 home starts supposedly in 2003. In 2011, there were 43 applicants for, at about $165,000. So it is clear. So, it is clear that the building boom and the attraction is come and gone. And I'm going to just switch quickly. Mr. Slavin and Mrs. Whiteside are two of the cheapest people you have ever met. And I think that between the two of us, we've already come up with four ways of generating revenue.
Good for you.
And one of them, I actually researched, it was cameras at stop signs and, you know, things like that. There's a city in British Columbia that generated $19 million in one year in traffic safety cameras.
I was going to make a statement to your original thing, but I'm not going to, because I promised I wouldn't talk. For now.
So, I appreciate all the comments that were made tonight, especially around the passion in this group, and about how devastating cuts are to every citizen in Wayham. We talk a lot about the schools, and that's what we're elected to do. But we also understand that the cuts, you know, that if you impact education, because there was a comment made that, you know, your cuts affects the whole entire town, ours do too. It affects the whole entire town when it comes when you have a school system that continues to go down, then people move out, or they're just not coming into this town. So, I just want to, I think that's just an important point to make, that all of these cuts affect the whole entire town. And I think that-
And property values.
And so, I think that we could continue to make the case and try to convince the townspeople that the cutting is devastating and all of the effects of that. But I think that there's a time for that, and that time starts as soon as this agreement is made, and we get the numbers to the FinComs, so they have an opportunity to review it. So, then we have a plan going into town meeting to vote a balanced budget. Like, that is what has to get done. And I think that everything that everybody is doing, and the information that's being gathered, and the stories that are being told, and the stories of devastation, the stories of hope, and the stories of new revenue, and the story, not stories, but the real facts around it, need to, that conversation, like, that's the conversation that I want to have here. I don't want to talk about cuts anymore. I want to talk about the hope of how we're not going to be here next year, and if I hear, I said this last night, if I hear one more time, I think it's bad this year, it's going to be worse next year. Again, that is completely left up to us, as well as the rest of the town and the rest of the committees in this town. We have, it's kind of like you basically say, you know, I'm going to lose my house in a year, and you just say, oh, I'm going to lose my house in a year, and you just sit back and you let it happen. You have an opportunity, no matter what it is, you have an opportunity to change that course, and that's what I would like us to start working on. So, the question that I have is procedurally, where do we go from here? I know you don't have your full board here, and I don't even know if I'll be able to get a vote on this side of the table. But first, before I even ask for comments regarding a consensus on this, are you even able to provide that tonight? Or do you have to go back?
No, we will provide it tonight.
Okay. So, what I will ask from the School Committee here is whether we could, it's a decision point. We vote on consensus, or we vote on the cuts that are proposed by the Superintendent, and that those are the cuts that will go into this year's budget.
I don't know if I can vote for the way you see that.
No, I'll make a motion, it's more-
Because you say that the cuts that the Superintendent has recommended-
I'll make a motion that has numbers.
It'd be very hard for me to vote for those cuts. I can vote for a number.
Okay, so I-
We'll wind up doing the same, by the way. We're going to vote on the numbers that we were presented with tonight here. We're not going to, we're not going to break down into the individual departments involved.
That makes completely sense, and I appreciate that, that what I would be recommending in a motion is a vote on the recommended numbers that the Superintendent presented tonight.
Would you like us to go first?
Any other discussion before?
Yes, just a point of clarity. Does that mean we have to take, we'll take all three votes?
Yes.
Non-net?
Yes.
That's the adjusted number with the agreement that Superintendent has had with Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of order, I think we should take those votes separately.
Yes, I think so, yeah, like you do every year. So, we would do non-net, net, and then the full. Or is it net, then non-net, then full? We'll decide on that.
So, we're agreeing to a percentage? And then we're agreeing to the dollar amounts that we see on this document from Mr. Sullivan, showing the school side, well, showing the total deficit. Then the school side reduced 663,146, and the town side reduced 381,179. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that our motions aren't sailing past each other in the night here.
Sure, so, I know that the first time that we discussed this, that we did talk that the vote would be on a percentage. We are now talking about a percentage and a number. I'd like to ask each one of our administrators their recommendation on that.
For simplicity's sake, I would only take two of them, because when we're speaking, we're also saying that if the leprechaun comes out and we get something else from the state, that we're going to split the revenues as well. And I think that's one of the fair things. So, I would use for this, for this, that to satisfy the deficit, you would have the 63 and a half, 36 and a half split for the deficit, solve the deficit, and also with any new revenues brought in. I would ask that somebody make that sound more intelligent.
Point of information.
I need a clarity question on that, too.
So, first, Jeff?
Point of objection.
As we unfortunately know, there's two pages to the cherry sheets. I assume you're talking about the net, because the second page can be somewhat a negative experience.
Yes, the first adjustment that we had this year was wonderful on Page One and terrible on Page Two.
Exactly. So, what you're really talking about is the net impact of the cherry sheets would be shared based on these percentages.
Correct.
Thank you.
More intelligent.
Yes.
I have a clarity question for Mr. Sullivan or Dr. Rubenovich. On this, this, I don't know, memorandum of understanding, or whatever you want to call this document, I underlined the word "new revenue" next to the last in that paragraph, next to the last line. Now, just for a point of clarity, are we talking about additional state revenue? Or are we talking about any revenue? That does make a difference, as far as I'm concerned. Are we talking exclusively state revenue? Or are we talking exclusively any place we can find money?
Well, my understanding of our conversation was any additional state money that-
State money.
Right, which is the net of the cherry sheet. So, after the Senate and the combined groups do their vote, if there are more dollars coming in from the state, then that would be shared in the same manner that the deficit was cut.
Because that's not what the line says. So, we should put the state revenues in there, because, you know, I was kind of like getting all hot and bothered here that we were going to share on all additional revenues, and that would be a nice thing. So, that's not on the table, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, state revenue.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
And I just want to be clear, I mean, we're taking, what we vote on today is a vote for today. I hope this isn't going to be precedent-setting, you know, per case.
No, because I still like to debate the percentages.
I think that's a great, that's the quote for both sides on here.
Today, the percentages is for this year, not for going forward. And that's, I think, what-
It's not in perpetuity.
Right, and I think that that's part of the respectful debate that will go on as these two boards continue to meet on a regular basis regarding new revenue that comes into this town. And I think that the percentage needs to be debated also.
I think this is going to go even one step farther. I'm hoping that before we get into next year, that we basically have every dollar coming in, a percentage goes to the school department of the town, and then the other town departments get the balance broken up. Because I think in the long run, it's the only way we can operate. If we have X number of dollars coming in as they grow, and as things, we internally change things around, we need to come up with a piece of pie for each set. We all know what we have to live with, and we all figure it out. Because the other way, you're going to be back and forth with no standard.
Good.
That will come up, what Cliff is looking for.
Well, no, I just wanted some clarity.
But I'm saying that will give us clarity, we'll come up with a reasonable percentage.
And the, that'd be great, you know, because we know that we're still going to have some growth. We've got a big project going down there in '28 right now that's going to provide additional growth. So, I see that as additional revenue. So, certainly, I would think that-
Yeah, we'll get revenues from the licensing fees, which has already increased already. But the actual effect, we'll say Walmart, say the hotels, the hotel, etc., will probably take two years before you see any real benefit. And we have to do a lot more work in the next two years and wait for that.
So, just again, when we're talking about the vote here, definitely, we can vote on a, the percentage of revenue and also cuts, the percentage of the 63.5 and the 36.5, and make that as a vote. So, it is the percentage of the cuts, as well as the percentage of any new state revenue that comes in.
For the FY14 budget.
For the FY14 budget. But the, this is for you, Dr. Rubenovich, I just want to finish this point. Tonight, do we actually need to vote on the actual numbers since we're voting on a percentage?
Well, the actual numbers for, on our side that we normally vote, yes, because the appropriation needs to go to the town, needs to go to FinCom.
Will you also be doing the numbers also tonight, the percentage and the numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm actually trying to draft the motion now, I was going to read it out as a proposed motion for each side here, if you will.
Okay. All right.
Body of the first pot, to the body of the second pot.
Hold on, I have a-
I'm trying to keep the legalese out, that's why it's hard to write, Cliff.
I have a question, yes.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Just for the record, I still don't agree with the percentages, but that's okay. I think we need to be 100% clear, the frog is dying. And by that, I mean, the vast majority of our citizens won't care at all about these cuts. And the amount of money per property holder necessary to avoid these cuts is trivial. And what we are really talking about is a total failure of trust in government. It's that simple. So, no one should be congratulating themselves about anything tonight, because we are here, because there's no trust. And the first thing we need to work on, before we even think about getting more revenue from our, from our citizens and taxpayers, is how we're going to get that trust back. So, enough.
Well, to that point, this is exactly why I stood up, because I think the most important thing going forward in terms of developing the trust you seek between the town government, which means our bodies, and the citizenry, is to first have some trust amongst ourselves. And one of the reasons I stood up at town meeting and caused the ruckus I did was because I had committed to the notion that I wanted to work with the School Committee, that I felt political risk either way with the budget as it was presented. I knew in doing so that it was likely we would come to this point, that the quote-unquote "townside departments" would take a significant shaving. But I had committed to Chairman Vugan that I would stand up and do this, and notwithstanding that I looked out at that body that night, and knew that I could just sit on my haunches, do nothing, the budget that Mr. Sullivan had proposed would have sailed through. I didn't think that was the correct course of action. I didn't think that was the way to build trust. I didn't think that was the way to show leadership. And so, I apologize especially to the FinCom for the ruckus I caused in doing it. But I think it was a necessary step to bridge the gaps that heretofore existed between the Selectment and the School Committee, and to sit down and begin the serious discussions that we need to have. So, I do agree 100% with you. But until the public sees that we can work together, then they're not going to trust any of us. So, I hope that we can continue to amplify upon what we've done here through the budgeting process in the following year, and get the citizens to realize that we're serious about doing our jobs.
So, the only thing I'm going to say is that I concur that there is a trust issue. The only way, this is not from this point in the past has not built up any more trust. Even this decision tonight is not going to build up any more trust. The only thing that's going to build up more trust is tomorrow, the next day, the next day, and the next day. And as we continue to basically say that we are as leaders, elected leaders of this town, that we're going to put the right priorities in place, and start putting the revenue where it needs, in the best interest of all the citizens here. Like, that, I just, again, it's what we do from this point forward. But right now, we have to figure out how to be able to have a starting point, an awful starting point, an absolutely devastating, horrible starting point. But we need to be able to do that, so then we can start building that trust starting tomorrow. And I will ask that, you know, after this, just to give everyone a preview, I will ask for our next meeting date together to start talking about that. And I don't want to meeting this all out, but I want to start having that worst conversation when we're not talking about the past, that we're talking about the future. So.
Agreed.
Yes.
To the point about trust, and this is what kind of got me to where I was today, when I was thinking all day. And I remember when this, when we got together the first time this year, and Derek had presented his budget, and basically, it was a revenue-based budget, it wasn't needs-based budget, and what little money he found, he put it on the school side, I think it was $60,000, is that right? And then you've got the $400,000 bond for the textbooks, you know? And then, and then I mentioned the library today, but I was also prepared to speak. I hadn't seen your presentation yet. I thought, you know, I might see maybe a cut in the resource officer there, too, because I know, I saw that nine-hour meeting, and I know Chief Stanley was saying how he can barely keep one, keep one resource officer, and to do it right, he needs three, you know, for this town. So, you clearly, you bent over backwards, you have, and I appreciate it, and I commend you. Thank you.
All right. Okay.
So, everybody knows I'm not sleeping over here. Dr. Sylvia gave me one minute of his time.
I've used my time.
I just think of a famous quote that I saw, and it's, "Today is the tomorrow you worried about yesterday." And, you know, that's where we're at. Two things that stand out. One of the, I'm not sure if it was, one of the ladies that was being interviewed for the Superintendent's job mentioned a word, and it was marketing, and that's what we need to do. Dr. Sylvia, his quote is always, "You can't solve an expense side of, or the whatever, the revenue." I should know that by heart. And another comment that stood out to me last night that Jeff Swett said, and I thought about it all night. I said, wow, that's, it's true. He was talking about the number of people on low income, but he also made a comment about the well-to-do people in this town need to step up and invest in this town, because there is, it does come back on them, too. And so, we have to be creative, and I want to thank Alan and Peter for stepping up and already reaching out, trying to get some funds for the library. And gee, I just hope that I'm not the first car stopped at one of your new traffic cameras that you're going to put up. But those are all thinking outside the box, and that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Okay. Chair Tittlebaum, would you like to make your motion first?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, just trying to include the things. I'm just reading this out as a sort of a draft. I moved to resolve the current budget deficit by reducing the deficit amount of $1,044,325 to $0, using the following percentages and amounts. A, 63.5% of the deficit reduction to be borne by the School Department, and a total dollar reduction of 663,146. And B, 36.5% of the deficit reduction to be borne by the General Government, and a total dollar reduction of $381,179. And C, further, that any additional state revenues received between- And C, further, that any additional state revenues received between now and town meeting be split in accordance with the above percentages.
For the budget year, fiscal?
Right, for the fiscal year 2014. Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
For us, that 663 has to be dealt with first.
We need three votes.
We first have to take a vote on non-net.
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to reduce the, okay. Oh, I can't make the motion?
Have somebody read it, have somebody make the motion.
Can somebody make the motion on the, no, I don't, I don't have it.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Read it.
Well.
And I'll. Will someone make this motion?
Will somebody make this motion? To reduce the non-net school budget from, which one? $1,601,056 to $1,476,287.
So moved.
You ran the figure wrong.
No, no.
Yeah, she ran the figure wrong.
So.
$1,601,056.
$56 to $1,476,287. Okay.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. All right, can I have yours? I'll just reach yours. I started right.
You want me to read it for you because you're never going to figure out my hand scratching here? I'll read it and somebody can say so moved, would that be eas-, would that be easier?
Okay, so for the, the first, the non-net, okay.
No, net.
I mean, the net, and then we'll make it on the percentages. Okay. Uh, could someone make a motion to reduce the non-net school spes-, school spending from $1,601,056?
No.
No, this one.
No.
Sorry, guys. So $26,66,514 to $25,403,368.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. 4-0-1. Do we have the total?
And then we have to do the total, which is changing in front of us to that.
Okay, so I would like a motion to reduce the total school spending from $34,172,003 to $26,879,655.
So moved.
What? No, 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 no.
This one here, total.
$34 million? Oh, you know what? That goes to the in-kind.
That's pretty huge.
Sorry. That's what was.
Sorry, guys.
With the in-kind.
27, 667, 570.
Say that again.
27. 27, yeah. 27, 667, 570. I'm, I'm terrible at math, but I'm good at arithmetic.
27, 667, 570.
Do I have to add those two, or is that, that's the right number? Okay.
Wait a minute, is that the old number?
They need the old number first.
Oh, okay, let me try again then. 26, 870, 880.
No, no, the total, 27,667,507.
So I was right.
Yeah.
No, we need the 23, the second one.
Oh, the second one, okay.
5, 5, 6, 0.
I'll give you the numbers afterwards.
6, 8. Actually, I gave you that number.
Yeah, that's where it is.
26, 879, 555.
So it's, it's that.
655, it's correct.
555, yep.
26, 879, 655?
655, yes.
Thank you, okay. I would like a motion to reduce the total school spending from $26,879,655.
No, two.
That's the end.
You're just going to get two, from, now just say from and then.
Somebody make the motion.
The motion? I made a motion that we reduce the total school spending from $27,667,570 to $26,879,655.
Yes, that's it.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. So the last one. Somebody make the motion, please.
Do you want me to read off that motion?
Uh, I don't think that you can.
Regarding the percentages and so forth, or, because I can read it and you can just say so moved.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was, I'll try to do it quickly. I moved to resolve the current budget deficit by reducing the deficit amount of $1,044,325 to $0, using the following percentages and amounts. A, 63.5% of the deficit reduction to be borne by the school department and a total dollar reduction of $663,146. And B, 36.5% of the deficit reduction to be borne by the general government and a total dollar reduction of $381,179. And C, further, that any additional state revenues received between today and town meeting for the fiscal year 2014 budget be split in accordance with the above percentages.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. What I will say again tonight is that please do not take the camaraderie, the, uh, the jokes. Um, I think that it's one of those things that's born when, when you're in the worst pain, you kind of laugh through it. Uh, this is, this is not a, this is a sad day and, um, every, all the cuts that we just made, again, will have effects throughout this town. Uh, what I, again, what I would like to do is ask the board, uh, the board of selectmen, the town administrator, and also my board for, I won't do it tonight, but it will be in an email, maybe you'll send out an email and I'll send out an email because I don't want to prolong this by everybody looking at their calendars. Um, but I, I don't even think that we should wait until the 19th. I think that we should start talking, um, you know, again, the FinCom is going to take this budget, they're also going to make their recommendations, they're going to come back, they're going to provide feedback to us and, and everything that, um, was done tonight. Um, and hopefully, you know, we will come to a point that we're going to town meeting and that we're basically saying this is the balanced budget that we're going into this year. But again, I don't think that we should even wait, that we need to start working as soon as possible on how we're going to set priorities in this town and how we're going to start bringing more revenue into this town because it is, it's what's needed.
13, 16.
Okay, so let him know that and then we'll, okay. Anything else from anyone? I thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And I think this board, I know that it's, it's, we're, we're going to be battling it up for weeks come, but is there anything else from anyone? And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Just, just briefly, I just wanted to say one thing. I'd also like to thank the two selectmen who couldn't be here tonight. They were an integral part of all of this and worked hard and, uh, their absence should not be taken as anything other than they had specific individual circumstances to deal with tonight. Thank you. Motion, please?
I'm stuck in the door, I don't.
Okay, well, it was out of order at the time made, but that's okay. All right.